November 18th Board of Supervisors meeting. Happy to have all of you here today. Good afternoon, and we'll start with a roll call, please.
Supervisor Boone.
Here.
Supervisor Flores.
Present.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer. Supervisor Baines.
Present.
Supervisor Stevens.
Great, if I can ask everybody to please rise. And we'll ask Steve Fokes is here from actually the, hi Steve, how are you? Well, Steve's here to do the, from Bridge Church to the invocation. And then we'll have Mr. Steve Smith do the pledge of allegiance. Lead us in the pledge.
Father, we give thanks today for this community we live in. We thank you for the citizenry and their heart for their community and their involvement. We thank you for our law enforcement officers that are watchmen on the wall over the citizenry. Father, I just asked today that we walk in unity. Father, I ask that the called ones, our county Board of Supervisors, walk worthy of the calling which they were called, with all loneliness and gentleness, with long suffering bearing, with one another in love, enduring, endeavoring to keep the unity and the spirit of peace and the bond of peace. Father, I ask for the provision of resources and funding for our community and our county be poured out, that there would be no lack, that this county and city would prosper, that it would be the light, the bright light, shining light on the hill for all to see. And Father, you say that if anyone lacks wisdom, that if we would ask of God, who gives it liberally, without reproach, that it would be poured out. So Father, we are asking for wisdom today to be poured out on these men before us as they make decisions that impact this community, impact the citizenry, and impact this community for years to come. We give you all praise and glory in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you Steve, that was a very positive prayer. You got us very motivated, appreciate it. And Steve Smith?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be seated, except for the supervisors, please join me in the front for a presentation.
Will Molly Bloom, please join the board up front for a presentation of a plaque in celebration of Sutter County Museum's 50th anniversary.
All right, this is great. Molly, you haven't been in 50 years. What is this?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I get to read this. Sutter County Museum 50th Anniversary, with gratitude for five decades of preserving local history, educating generations, and enriching the cultural life in our community. This milestone is a testament to the dedication of staff, volunteers, and the community who have supported the Sutter County Museum through the years. Here's to honoring the past, educating the present, and inspiring the future generations to come. So we, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we want to congratulate you for 50 years of amazing work that you all do. We are looking forward to Trees and Traditions coming up. Maybe you can tell us a little bit about that, too. And I'm going to hand the mic over to you and tell us about what's happened in the museum.
Thank you very much, Chair Flores and Honorable Board of Supervisors for having us. It's my honor to be a part of the museum during this special 50th year. And I brought with me two of our nonprofit board members. For those who don't know, the museum is a partnership between the county and the nonprofit Sutter County Museum Association. And what's very exciting is having Margaret Sands and Debbie Reed here. Both of their parents were on the original board and historic society as well. So their families have been longtime members of the museum and involved in what we're doing to serve the community. And then you asked me to talk about Trees and Traditions. So our association runs their annual fundraiser every year. So coming up on Friday, December 5th, we have Trees and Traditions. That's our fundraiser to provide programming and exhibits and the next year of things to serve the community. Tickets cost $50 apiece and are available at the museum. And we'll look forward to seeing many of you there. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Round of applause. Thank you. Do you want to say a few words, Debbie? On behalf of the nonprofit? You said a couple.
I'm Debbie Tarky-Reed, and I am the president of the Museum Association. And I am very proud of our museum and our community because everybody always turns out and supports us, whether we are reading books into the Christmas tree or barbecuing in the rain. And I just appreciate our community. So yes, Trees and Traditions is the fifth. It's our only fundraiser of the year, and we use it to support the programs at the museum the rest of the year. So we'd love to see all of you there. And we are so proud to have Molly as our curator because she has brought such life and so much fun to the museum. And we all go home knowing that we're ready to go to sleep. So, thank you Molly for all you do and for the supervisors for recognizing us today.
Thank you Debbie. Round of applause. But we look forward to joining you guys at Trees and Traditions and really appreciate the hard work that all of you put into making sure the museum is successful. Did you want to say a few words as well?
No, no, I didn't say anything more.
It's a good day. Okay. Oops, I gotta get to the right page. Okay, we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, which is actually public comment, where members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or any action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments?
Yes, we have one speaker, Tony Farley.
Tony, no kidding, really?
I'm back.
All right, Tony's back.
Back from the holidays. There's Jeff Boone, Jeff Boone, Boone, good job Jeff Boone, good job. Carm Baines, Carm Baines, good job Carm Baines, DDI Carm Baines, I like that. Dan Flores, Darth Vader Star Wars versus Wonder Woman. And Jeff Stephen Farhaus, Punkin Pie, next year 2026, March, 31 years old, I'll be game of Punkin Pie. And Mike Ziegemeyer, My Hunter Cheerleaders versus your Sir Husky Cheerleaders, man, that'd be awesome. And Sarah R. Rios, Sarah R. Rios, good job Sarah Rios. The handsome guy over there, good job. Ivy Lee girl. And Gina and Stephanie, good job. And Laura, good job. And Jamie, good job. And Zachary Hamble's department, good job. And Neil, good job, good job Neil. Good job BMW guy, good job the librarian girl. Good job Ad Commissioner, Agzar. Good job Professor Steve Smith. Good job William Bell, the president. Good job Colonel of 37 Palms of San Diego. Good job Two Star Scott Smallwood. And good job Cadet Deputy, good job, thank you for your service. I hope I get more meetings lately, I hope I get more meetings over your counties in December. So keep up the meetings, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Tony. And we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial, for which prior policy direction has been given to the staff and that require only routine action by the board. The chair will advise the audience that the matters may be adopted in total by one motion. However, the board may at its option or upon request of a member of the public, consider any matter separately.
Moved to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Supervisor Baines, a second by Supervisor Boone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, Consent Calendar carries. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is we're going to adjourn the Board of Supervisors meeting and reconvene as Water Works District. Madam Clerk, we'll let the roll call stand, please. And then, public comment. Do we have any public comment for Water Works? There being none, we'll move on to appearance item number one.
Approval of adjustments to the Water Works District 1, fiscal year 2023-24 adopted budget, increasing net appropriations by $114,583 and fiscal year 2024-25 adopted budget, increasing net appropriations by $5,647, offset by increased net of revenues and expenditures for fiscal year and cleanup.
Hi, good afternoon Chair and Directors of Water Works District 1. So Neil Hay to present this item on behalf of the district. So this, like the title mentioned, is a cleanup and adjustments to the budget for the district. I think as you're aware, every year we present a budget of expected expenditures and revenues for the district. The expenditure, I'm sorry, the revenues are very fixed based on the fees that we charge for all of the property owners. But the expenditure is very based on all of the maintenance items that we have to do for the various properties throughout the community. So the item before you is essentially a budget cleanup just for the district that's been identified. The professional specialized services, so as you're aware, we use an outside consultant to operator because it's a state mandated system, so you have to have a state certified operator. So these are services that, one, they provided in addition to just standard state mandated operations. These are some of the repairs and maintenance at some of the properties. I think we've talked before about the step tanks, the floats, and the pumps at each of those properties. Also included in these costs are the, we utilize an electrician and a septic pumping service in order to try to do a lower cost maintenance and repairs at some of the individual properties. With any of that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
To the chair.
Yes Supervisor Boone.
Yeah, Neil, if I recall, we voted for or approved a generator for that location. Is that true? I can't remember.
So in the past, the board authorized the submittal of a grant application for a backup generator. It's about a, and subsequently that made it into a federal grant or a federal subsidy earmark. It's been tied up in legislation for the, at least the last fiscal year. There's a chance that it may come through in the current administration and the current budget appropriations. We just had a meeting with the Ferguson Group just this week, and it sounded like by March, we would know whether or not the appropriations, there's like nine appropriations and it's in one of those, whether or not it's going to be approved.
Also, with respect to the wastewater treatment facility, I know that we were in plans of engineering and those are back now, is that right?
So we have been working with a grant consultant to help us do the, first we have to get a grant to pay for the engineering, to create the documents, the construction documents, to upgrade the sewer laterals, the sewer mains that are within the streets. We figure that's about a $4 million construction project. In order to do that, first we have to do the design of the documents. And the district itself does not have the funds to pay for that. So we're utilizing an outside consultant in conjunction with RCAC to seek the grant funds just to pay for the engineering. With that is, when that grant's kind of all put together, we'll be bringing it before your board for submission. It sounds like it's kind of a revolving fund, so there's always funds available. You just have to repair all the packages and then make the submission.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any public comments, Madam Clerk? Okay, then we will officially bring back to the board now for any other questions. Supervisor Stevens.
Neil, is it typical that we, it looks like we're adjusting the budget for two budget years. Is that typical or is that what we're doing?
Yes, that is what we're doing, and I think it's kind of a combination of things. The county's transitioned to workday, and this being a special district, there's kind of some carryover items that had to be addressed. But in the future, it'll just be one budget year at a time. And even our department is getting better at obviously trying to be able to predict the costs and the expenditures in the district.
Okay, thank you.
With that, any other comments, questions, and I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
First by Supervisor Boone, second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, the motion carries. And we'll move on to the next item, Neil.
Approved bill collection and service termination plans for delinquent wastewater billing for Water Works District 1.
So previously, we brought an item before your board to look at adjusting the administrative fees within the district. This is now a follow-up action that we have identified. There are a number of property owners and recipients of the wastewater services in the district that have accounts that are past due. And I think as I've maybe previously explained, so back during the time of COVID, there was an executive order issued by the governor that said you could not turn off someone's water service if they didn't pay their water bill. We took that to extend to wastewater services, a little ambiguous, but on, we aired maybe on the side of caution. Unfortunately, there's a number of properties that then since that time, you know, didn't pay their sewer bill. And in, so we as a department are seeking to try and collect the monies that are owed to the district for the services that have been provided. So we've identified the properties, we've prepared what are 15-day notices and 48-hour notices that would be sent to the outstanding, the properties with the outstanding balances and give the folks an opportunity to contact our department and one either come and see us and execute a payment plan, 12 to 18-month payment plan, so that the district could receive the funds that it owed. If we don't receive things after the 15-day notice is issued, then at 48 hours before the termination period, we would send out a 48-hour notice advising the folks that if you, you know, don't make payment, we're going to be forced to terminate your sewer service. And so then, at the end of the 48 hours, we would go and essentially disable the step tanks at the properties so that the sewer system wouldn't work. The challenge with that becomes is that without sewer septic service in the county, in very short time, the residence becomes unlivable. And so then, as development services, through the Building Inspector Code Enforcement Program, property can be red tagged and residents would be, would need to, you know, vacate the premises. So it's a very serious matter, but we're trying to be objective in that just all the properties that have outstanding balances have been identified. And in the past, over a number of years, my department has executed payment plans with various residents. There have been a few that have been completed. There have been a lot that started and not completed. And so this is a matter that once and for all. I think as we've, you know, previously talked about, the user fees are, they were set quite some time ago for the district. They're $103.50 per month, and we're just not collecting that. But the district relies upon those revenues in order to pay the fees because of the budget issues that we're having, right? With the professional services that your board just reviewed and approved. So this is an action to try to unfortunately explain to the residents that we're very serious about this. Just within the last couple of weeks, there was a town hall. Director Stevens had down in the community Robins, and we, you know, brought this matter up and identified the fact that it was something that your board was going to consider. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Cue the chair. Neil, when would these notices be going out, right away or within the month or? Do you have any idea?
So I think, one, we certainly are open to, you know, any input that your board wants to offer. We probably would seek to, probably after the Thanksgiving holiday. So we probably would get to the first week of December and then be able to provide notices and the fact that then we would try to have this all addressed well before the Christmas holiday.
One other question, so once you turn off sewage, would the house be red tagged at that point? Or would, you said, would it happen quickly or would it, would it be like months?
Yeah, it would happen within 24 hours is normally the amount of time period that, for example, a building inspector and code enforcement would pay visits, right, to see?
Once it was red tagged?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
To the chair. Yes. Moved to approve staff's recommendation. Okay, we have a motion.
I have another question.
Another question, Supervisor Boone.
Oh, Neil, you know, with the holidays coming and all, I just have a hard time putting a lot of pressure on somebody. And I just wondered, you know, you're going to get through Thanksgiving holiday and then we're going to have Christmas. And we're talking about families that are struggling here and I understand that they owe some money, I understand that. And I don't know if they've exercised all their options when it comes to maybe churches or other grants that may be available. So I'd like to maybe make a motion to change it to after the first of the year, if that's possible, if we can do that.
So we have a motion on the floor, so we have to travel that through?
Motion to change the date to January 1st.
Okay, so would that be a friendly amendment or how would we frame that? We carry the first motion first and then?
Yeah, there is a first motion, it hasn't been seconded. The second one would be another motion, so we would address the first motion first and then?
Okay, I'll second the first motion.
Okay, we have a first by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Stevens. And then, so I'll do a roll call vote, please.
Director Boone?
Aye.
Director Flores?
Aye.
Director Ziegemeyer? Director Baines?
Aye.
Director Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, and then, well?
The next friendly motion to carry, or?
Well, I think we carried the, we already carried the vote, right? So we're done.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
First motion took care of it.
So we can't move that?
No, so it would have been a separate motion, is what he was saying.
Yeah, there was no second, the first motion had to be dealt with first. It was dealt with, it approved everything that was there.
Yeah, but I held it up after he made the first nomination, and I held it up and said that I wanted to pass that off till January 1st.
The board can consider the second motion if there's a second to that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Boone. Is there a second to his motion? Okay, we have a second to the motion by Supervisor Ziegemeyer. If I can have a roll call vote, please, on this.
Director Boone?
Aye.
Director Flores?
No.
Director Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Director Baines?
Aye.
Director Stevens?
No.
Okay, the motion carries, so we do have a hold until, was it January?
January 1st.
January 1st, okay. All right, great, then we'll move on to the next item of business. Thank you Neil, appreciate it.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you Neil.
Okay, there's no other business of this board, and we don't have a closed session, so we're going to adjourn Water Works District Number 1 Board and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. We'll let the roll call stand, Madam Clerk, and have, we'll start with a public hearing, item number 11.
Public hearing to consider approval of a resolution revising the fee schedule for Edel Hall Department rentals to reflect the cost of managing the Edel Hall rental program.
Welcome back Molly.
Thank you, yes, I'm putting on my Edel Hall hat, so although, so Molly Bloom, museum director and curator, and we, as the museum staff, also manage Edel Hall, which is a separate budget unit that does not have its own dedicated staff. So as you all may know, the county periodically reviews fees charged by departments to ensure that our fee structure accurately reflects the costs of providing the services. The last time that the fee structure for Edel Hall was revised was in July of 2023. And the cost of utilities, maintenance, upkeep, and staff time have all increased since the fees were last set. So staff performed a fee study, the results of which are in your packet, to verify the accuracy of fees. And based on the time study, we've come with new recommendations. I would say it's a modest increase that reflects the cost of providing the services. But the main thing we are proposing is that previously there were four different rent rates and four different security deposit rates depending on whether or not people chose to include alcohol in their reservation and whether or not they wanted to add on the rose garden. The reality is that there isn't really a difference in staff time regardless of what type of rental you have. So therefore, we're proposing to have one rate for all of those just for the most efficient use of staff time and to help the public better understand our rates. Currently, if someone asks, how much does it cost to rent Edel Hall? The answer is, it depends. Are you planning to include alcohol and would you like to include the rose garden? So I think this will make it easier for the public to rent Edel Hall and eliminate a lot of back and forth as well as if people decide they'd like to add on alcohol or add on the rose garden, we have to go back and change all their contracts, recollect all the correct fees. So this will just be more efficient for the public and for staff. And then the other changes were just to match the cleaning flat rate. If a renter does not clean, we deduct from their security deposit a rate to cover the cost of custodial, county custodial cleaning the building. And so currently, our rates don't keep pace with the cost for just the hours of time that custodial staff would spend cleaning the building. But we do propose keeping the same rates in effect for discounts, which includes right now the nonprofit rental discount of 25% off fees as well as a weekday daytime partial rental fee for people who are having meetings and things like that. So with that, I think that's all that I had for this, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have about the proposed fee structure.
Okay, any questions or comment? Okay, sorry, gonna open up a public hearing, right? Okay, so we're gonna open up a public hearing. Do we have any public comments? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing. Now bring back to board. And have a motion to approve.
Okay.
And a second from Supervisor Boone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, there being none, the motion carries. Thank you Molly, appreciate you. Okay, move on to the next item, appearance item.
Approval to nominate a member and an alternate member to the California State Association of Counties Board of Directors for 2025-2026.
Hello, Honorable Chair and Supervisors, I'm Gina Graham, your Assistant Clerk of the Board. In addition to what Ms. Ratner just stated, the current member for 2025 is Supervisor Dan Flores, and the current alternate is Supervisor Mike Ziegemeyer. So under the provisions of the CSAC Constitution, the Board of Supervisors for each county will annually nominate a member and an alternate to the CSAC Board of Directors. And then the nominees are appointed by the CSAC Executive Committee to a one-year term commencing with the first day of the CSAC Annual Conference. And this year, that conference is on December 1st.
Okay, thank you Gina for that. I'm gonna start it off, I would like to say that it's been an honor to serve on the CSAC Board. I've been on for 11 years, so I think it's time that I kind of relinquish that. I've enjoyed it, I've learned a lot. I think Sutter County has played a strong leadership role at the CSAC level. We've brought back many awards over the years from great work of staff and what the community has done together. So I've really appreciated serving. With that, too, I've had a strong alternate in Supervisor Ziegemeyer, who's been at every CSAC conference that I can recall and been pretty actively involved and has a really strong understanding of what's going on at CSAC right now. So with that, I'd like to nominate Supervisor Ziegemeyer to take over.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we need to nominate an alternate?
I would like to make a motion to nominate Supervisor Baines.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, congratulations gentlemen and lead well at CSAC. We know you will, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Gina. Okay, move on now to item 13.
Approval of the selection and award to IEM International for the provision of updating the multi-hazard local hazard mitigation plan funded through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program in the amount of $344,321 for the period of October 28th, 2025 to January 31st, 2027, authorization for the county administrator or the emergency operations manager to execute and sign the agreement, and authorization for the county administrator or emergency operations manager to sign all related agreement amendments.
Good afternoon, before your honorable chair and board. My name is Leanne Hennessy, I'm a coordinator here in the Office of Emergency Management. Today, I bring before your board an independent contractor agreement between Sutter County and IEM International to provide consulting services to update our local hazard mitigation plan. Our current plan was adopted by our board on September 28th, 2021, with final FEMA approval dating January 13th, 2022. Federal regulations require this plan be updated every five years, which sets ours to expire January 12th, 2027. Starting this project now, we'll remain in compliance with federal regulations but also remain eligible for grant funds, which I'll go into next. So what is hazard mitigation? For Sutter County, one major component of this plan is the community rating system, which is key for county residents to reduce their national flood insurance program rates. The CRS is a point-based system, and points are earned based on competent, I'm sorry, on comprehensive planning. The system is on a scale of 1 to 10, with the lower the score, the lower the NFIP rates. Sutter County's current CRS rating is 6. So why hazard mitigation? It reduces or eliminates long-term risk before disasters happen. By strengthening critical infrastructure and planning unknown hazards, we can prevent damage, save lives, and lower recovery costs. Decades of research and national data prove that for every dollar spent on mitigation, it avoids $6 in recovery losses. Decades, I'm sorry. This proves that mitigation works and is one of the best ways to protect people and property. So for this update, we have 11 participating jurisdictions. And by participating in the plan and keeping it updated and FEMA-approved gives us all the ability to apply for additional grant fundings through Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Flood Mitigation Assistance Program, and other funding opportunities. These grants and programs are specific to hazard mitigation, to fund the projects that we identify when we update our plan. The plan must be current for us to be able to qualify for the funding opportunities. So the selection of IEM was done through the formal Request for Qualification and Proposal Process with evaluation of the submissions, interviewing the consulting firms, and then checking references of the top two firms. With your approval of the agreement, the project will be kicked off with coordination, lead into data gathering and goal setting, and wrap up with final approval, I'm sorry, final adoption by your board first, and then FEMA approval, and then interim implementation. This plan is designed to be a community-driven plan that reflects shared goals, actions, and the entire community to reduce risks from disasters. By aligning community efforts under one coordinated plan, it strengthens resilience, sustainable, I'm sorry, supports sustainable development and helps the community qualify for this mitigation funding. The last update we did was done during the COVID-19 pandemic, which really hindered our ability to maximize public participation. Our goal with this update is to promote community engagement and involvement, leveraging community meetings, surveys, and other methods to gather public information. So for funding, on February 11th, your board approved the Office of Emergency Management to accept grant funding through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program in the amount of $374,850 for this specific project. The grant requires a 25% match, which will be provided in kind through county and all participating jurisdictions, staff time dedicated to this project. This will not impact the general fund and has been approved in this fiscal year's budget. The total cost for our plan to update with IEM International is $344,321, which will be covered by grant funds. And so with that, I will answer any questions you have.
Okay, first, do we have any questions from the public? Okay, there being none, I'll bring it back to the board for questions.
Not to put you on the spot, and I just wanted to ask, does anybody follow up like the last plan in '22? If we adhered to it pretty good? Or if we accomplished the things we wanted to accomplish? Do you have any information on that?
So I know there are plans, I'm sorry, there are projects that were in that original plan in 2022 that were completed. And I apologize, I don't know offhand, I'll have to look into it and get back to you. Some of the projects that may not have been started from the 2022 may carry over into 2027.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
Question, please.
Yes, Supervisor?
Yeah, I was wondering, so you had the first photograph up there. It looked like, what was it, Teasdale Weir or something? It was all backed up with a bunch of loose wood that was floating, driftwood. Is that that one? Oh, you had it there.
Oh, on the first, very first.
That one. Yeah, so this is, this money goes for these sorts of services? What's the biggest part of this grant that we're trying to get? What, what takes the most money? Is it administration? Is it, is there one certain area where the, most of the money's being spent? That's all I was asking.
For this grant specifically, correct? I don't know offhand how it's broken down, but it will, it will fund the consultant to be able to draft the plan for us and help walk us through the entire planning process, which can take anywhere from six months to a year, depending.
Okay, so the $300,000 is for?
For the consulting services.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, then I'll bring it back for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this is grant-driven.
Yes.
Doesn't cost, doesn't cost, and we have to have this plan in place.
I'll second.
Okay, we had a motion by Supervisor Ziegemeyer and a tied second by Boone and Baines. So we'll do a roll call vote, please.
A joint effort.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, awesome, motion carries. Thank you, Leanne, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Move on to the next item.
Presentation on California Senate Bill 43.
Hello, Rick.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, seen you all day long.
I know.
It's my privilege, I guess.
Lucky me, right? Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Board members, Rick Bingham. I'm the Director for Sutter UBA Behavioral Health and the Assistant Director for Health and Human Services. I'm here today to talk about Senate Bill 43, which is an expansion of the LPS conservatorship regulations. And so I'll start with what LPS conservatorship is exactly. And so this is essentially a legal arrangement whereby an individual or the conservator is authorized to make legal decisions for another individual or the conservatee as a result of grave disability because of a mental illness. And county mental health plans, or MHPs, which we are, as Sutter UBA Behavioral Health, are charged with placing and treating conserved individuals in the least restrictive level setting that they can be at. And counties have responsibilities related to LPS conservatorships. Those responsibilities come under Behavioral Health and then also the Public Guardian's Office. So I'll start with Behavioral Health and our responsibilities. So we do screen, assess, and then provide an opinion on whether an individual meets LPS criteria. And then if we believe they do, we provide treatment recommendations. We also refer them to an appropriate facility for ongoing care and treatment. And we pay for those facilities and that treatment out of our Behavioral Health funds. We also case-manage these conservatees that are in locked placements, so that might be performing periodic evaluations to ensure that they still require the level of care that they are placed in. And then also for conservatees that are not in locked facilities, who are in the community, we provide linkage to other behavioral health services, to medical services, et cetera, and then transports to and from placements and to court appearances. And then the county's responsibilities related to the Public Guardian's Office. And for LPS conservatorships, the Public Guardian is almost always the conservator. Okay, and so there, the Public Guardian's responsibilities include investigation. So when they receive a referral from the court or another referral source, they determine whether or not it is likely that an individual will qualify for LPS services. They then ensure individualized treatment and placement. And they manage the conservatee's finances and then collaborate with us and other agencies to ensure that they're receiving the care that they, they require. As I stated before, Behavioral Health is charged with ensuring that these individuals receive treatment and placement. And that has to be in the least restrictive level of care possible. So there are kind of different levels of treatment and placement that are available throughout the state. And these are generally divided into kind of three different groups. So short-term treatment is generally locked facilities. Long-term care can either be locked or unlocked. And then you have residential care, which are unlocked facilities. And so, for example, we at Behavioral Health have a, what we call a PUF, a psychiatric health facility. That is a short-term locked facility. Generally, we only treat conservatees at that facility if they need really acute care for an acute condition. This is data that we have about our conservatees. I'll start with the top-left graphic that you see there. This is the number as of 24-25, number of conservatees that we have. So you can see there's 101 at the end of fiscal year 24-25. You can also see the sharp increase that there has been in conservatees over the last seven years. It's been about 106% increase during that period of time. And then below that, you see the costs. So total facility costs are close to $6.7 million annually to treat and place conservatees. And that is a rather substantial portion of the realignment that Behavioral Health receives. Average cost per client is listed there for you. And then average length of stay is about two and a half years. And then the graphic on the bottom right there is just split out by county. So you can see, generally speaking, we're pretty even with UBA County and the number of folks that we can serve. This slide is interesting, it was provided by DHCS. And it's the most recent data they have, but as you can see, it's a few years old from '21-'22. But for temporary conservatorships, and what that means is there's typically a period of time when someone files a referral and then that can, the Public Guardian does an investigation. And until the court determines that they're, that the individual qualifies for LPS conservatorship, there's kind of a temporary period where someone is conserved with limited powers until they are permanently conserved. And interestingly, Sutter County, we are tied with one other county as being the highest, having the highest number of temporary conservatorships in the state of California. And then when we go to permanent conservatorships, which is a bit of a misnomer really, because permanent is really only for one year, and they get renewed or not annually. We're still the fifth highest in the state of California with respect to the number of folks that we can serve in, in our areas. So that's, I think, interesting data and significant data for us. This is just the most updated information that we have. So as of October 2025, we have 89 folks on conservatorship, the types of placements that they're at. And again, you can see it's a pretty even split between the two counties with respect to who is doing the conserving. So that gets us to the changes that will be implemented as a result of SB 43. So Governor Newsom signed this law into effect in October of 2023. And implementation was to occur between January 1 or beginning January 1, 2024, but no later than January 1, 2026. And both your board and the UBA County Board agreed to delay implementation until January 1, 2026. So this expands the definition of gravely disabled under the LPS Act to include a severe substance use disorder and then a co-occurring mental health and severe substance use disorder. And then expands the criteria for grave disability to also include personal safety or necessary medical care as eligible possibilities for conservatorship. So you can see on the left, we have the old definition of grave disability under the LPS law. And on the right is the newer definition. So you can see, again, it's just been added, the substance use disorder, co-occurring disorder, and then personal safety or necessary medical care added there. And then the next is, again, just more of a graphic representation of some of those changes between the old and the new. So you'll note, again, the standalone diagnoses and then personal safety and medical care there. And so this does widen the door with respect to who is eligible to be conserved under the LPS law. And so as an example, on the top there, you might see folks who have had repeated overdoses, severe withdrawal, untreated infections or chronic illness as some of the things that could now be eligible for conservatorship under LPS. And then you see below that some, some additional examples. So what this means going forward, we don't exactly know. There's very little data at this point because very few counties have rolled out SB 43 prior to January 1, 2026. There were a handful of counties, I believe five, that implemented prior to this coming January. San Diego is one of those, they implemented in 2025. And they saw that only 1% of their 51-50 holds were associated with grave disability due to a severe substance use disorder. And they saw no significant trends that could be linked to this new criteria. And we're seeing anecdotally the same information from other counties as well. Okay, so interestingly as well, the governor signed this legislation, but there are no facilities that can, per their licensure, take individuals with a sole diagnosis of substance use disorder against their will, right? And so to kind of address that, SB 1238 was signed by Governor Newsom in September of 2024. And that does allow the admission of patients to LPS-designated facilities under SB 43. The Department of Healthcare Services is also working on interim regulations to provide guidance to facilities with respect to what that will look like. And then facilities have 18 months to reapply for LPS designation approval. So if you're currently LPS-designated, once 1238 is implemented, you need to reapply under the new requirements. And so these are some of the draft interim regulations under the new requirements. And a big one on this slide talks about withdrawal management. So this is something specific to substance use treatment that LPS facilities do not typically have in place. So you can see there FDA-approved medications for withdrawal management, including methadone. And then staff who are trained in withdrawal management. Okay, what this means also means increased staffing ratios. So our director of nursing, there, we need to have another, essentially, staff member that has the same qualifications should our director of nursing have the temerity to take a vacation or be sick. And, and then our physicians have previously counted in our staff ratios, they will no longer count in our staff ratio. So again, just increased staffing is what this means. And then the final thing that this means is also increased training for all staff. So you see there, again, training on withdrawal management, 20 hours of continuing education. That's in addition to the 48 hours that staff are already doing at these facilities. And these will affect our psychiatric health facilities. So we will be impacted by SB 1238 because we are an LPS-designated facility. And so, again, we will see the increased training costs, staffing costs, and withdrawal management training that we will need to do again. And SB 43 is not funded. And so these are costs that we will have to absorb in, in our budget in coming years. And that is the end of my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Rick. That was quite a bit of information and really helpful, too, because of so much going on with this proposition. Let me bring it back to the board for any questions or discussion.
Yes, Rick. Going back to your comment about the, what was I going? The, where you, where we were ahead, you know, where we didn't, we were tied. So going back to that comment, and we were number five someplace else, is that a good thing or a bad thing?
Well, I was going to say, it depends on your perspective, I guess.
I am just.
And I'll let Sarah answer this as well. My thought is, I think typically speaking, the reason why counties that are higher in conservatorships are is because they generally have less kind of resources around other treatment modalities, right? And so what we might see is in smaller counties with less resources, we don't have as many outpatient programs available. And so I think the courts feel like they have less options to choose from. And so rather than? And so rather than choosing an intensive outpatient level of treatment, which we have some of that, we just don't have a huge menu of options for that, right? So rather than choosing that, they, they choose conservatorship, right? And obviously, from a cost perspective, it's very difficult on us, but Sarah.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor. Rick answered that beautifully. So I think there is some kind of court-driven decision-making around risk tolerance. And so there will need to be a shift away from the comfort at some point potentially, right? You do this together with the courts, with the community, with their public safety leadership, away from locked facilities and into community-based programming. I don't think we've had that shift here necessarily. We have a very low risk tolerance. And then secondly, we're getting a lot of referrals straight from state hospital for conservatorship investigation based on their reform that they've been doing over the past several years, and then directly from the court. So we do see this being a state-driven issue.
Okay, so another question, Sarah, while you're up there. So, so when, once it's implemented, do, if we see the population double, say, of what, could it be something like that, what we might see? And it's not, it's not funded as it is, can we, is there any way we can afford that?
No.
So what's the solution to that?
So the solution would be certainly advocacy in the meantime, really good data tracking with those counties that have deployed this program, right? Really good education with all of our court and law enforcement partners about the process related to establishing grave disability legal criteria for SUD. So what we see is people typically get put on a hold and they clear because that's kind of the nature of the experience of the disease of addiction. So they, they don't meet criteria at the legal level, right? And so we want to be sure that we're educating about what that criteria is so people are appropriately placed. And then I think we need to continue to work together with our CalAim Justice Involve programs and our Prop 36 unfunded program to date. But we need to have an awareness that that also has a nexus for folks who might be caught in the SB 43 referral pattern, but really maybe be a Prop 36 client.
Would most of the homeless population out there fall under the SB 43?
I think it depends on folks' perspectives. I think from behavioral health's perspective, we would think, no, they're not going to meet criteria at high percentages. But other folks who are working with our homeless population might think that, yes, they do. So I think we'll have to work that out as the courts decide what legally meets the criteria since it's newly implemented.
Could be very expensive.
Yes.
To the chair.
Yes, Supervisor Boone.
Yeah, I have a quick question, or well, not quick maybe, but Rick mentioned something about we're going to have to hire a couple of more people, one, two, how many? What's the projection? I mean, is that something that's going to go on through the next five years? Something that goes on for next year? I didn't quite get that portion of it. Maybe I misunderstood.
So when SB 1238 is implemented, we have 18 months to update our policies and procedures and then get re-designated as an LPS facility. And so it won't necessarily mean hiring more folks. It will be being creative in the staff that we have. So when we hire staff, we'll have to ensure that they have certain training. And so in the beginning, we'll just be sending staff to training, making sure that they get that. And then as far as the staffing ratios, it's, for example, director of nursing, I think I mentioned that, we do have right now a staff member that also meets those requirements. So we have someone to cover for that. That's not always the case. So it just kind of depends on what our staffing looks like.
And what, and, and a projection, what's that going to look like in dollar, dollars number, a dollar number?
I would say at the most, per year. I mean, I would say at the most, two to three FTEs, so probably $350,000 to $450,000.
And, and this, this, this is pretty much paid by the state?
Not at all.
Not at all?
Through the chair.
The issue, it's not.
I know.
So yeah, Supervisor Ziegemeyer, oh, you're being sarcastic.
No, I mean, once again, we've proven to this state that the one-size-all approach does not work. What's this mean to the public? You're going to see shortened programs. You're going to see programs go away. You're going to see other programs replaced. You're going to see less people getting the help that they need. That's the bottom line. That's the truth right there. I mean, there's no way to cut it. There's not enough money. The state's forced us to do other things that they used to pay 100% for. They said, you know what, behavioral health, you guys take care of this, this program. Now, we think it's going to cost this, this is what we're going to give you. But it's more money than what it's actually costing. So yes, the state does fund behavioral health, but they only fund it so much, which means they have to do more with continuing to get less.
Okay, any other comments? Members, that was an informational item, but it was a substantial informational. So appreciate you, Rick. Thank you very much for the presentation, and we'll move on to the next item.
Approval of a memorandum of understanding between the County of Sutter and the Sutter County Law Library Board of Trustees. Increase one library technician position from 0.8 FTE to 1.0 FTE in the county library. amend the position allocation schedule for the county library to reflect the change in FTE and approval of an adjustment to the fiscal year 2025-26 adopted budget in the county library increasing appropriations by $10,000 in salaries and benefits, offset by a $10,000 contribution from the Sutter County Law Library Trust.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. I'm Ayla Elkins, the Director of Library Services. I'm here today to request your approval of a collaborative staffing and operational agreement between the County of Sutter and the Sutter County Law Library Board of Trustees. This item seeks to formalize a partnership through a memorandum of understanding that outlines the responsibilities of both parties, including staffing, supervision, and cost allocation. As part of this agreement, we're proposing to increase one existing library technician position from 0.8 to 1.0 full-time equivalent, or FTE, within the county library. This adjustment will allow the county to allocate approximately 0.2 FTEs, or eight hours per week, of staff time to the law library, ensuring a consistent onsite presence to assist patrons and maintain a safe, welcoming environment. To support this change, we're also requesting an amendment to the county library's position allocation schedule as well as a corresponding adjustment to the fiscal year 25-26 adopted budget. The budget adjustment would increase appropriations in the Sutter County Library budget by $10,000 for salaries and benefits, fully offset by a $10,000 contribution from the Sutter County Law Library Trust. This recommendation stems from the Law Library Board of Trustees' expressed need for staffing to support public access to legal resources and to assure appropriate use of the law library facility. The Law Library Board of Trustees and I have worked collaboratively to develop a solution that leverages existing personnel without the need to make, create new positions. There is no projected impact to the county general fund. The additional costs associated with the 0.2 FTE increase, not to exceed $10,000 annually, will be fully reimbursed by the Law Library Trust. Compensation will be based on the weighted hourly rate of the assigned library technician. This recommendation aligns with prior board action approving the relocation of the law library to the California room at the main library branch. And it supports the county's broader goals of fiscal responsibility, inter-agency collaboration, and continued investment in community-serving programs. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any public, members of public, no comments for questions?
Ayla, I just want to thank you for inviting us over and showing us your library is very nice.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. And I just need a clarification, legal counsel, I'm, I sound the, the Law Library Trust. Am I okay to vote on this topic?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right. So we have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Yes, Tony. Okay, we'll move on now to Steve Smith.
Approval of budget adjustments to the fiscal year 2023-24 adopted budget, increasing net appropriations by $7,418,839 and fiscal year 24-25 adopted budget increasing net appropriations by $8,337,96, offset by increased net of revenues and expenditures for fiscal year and cleanup of the county's financial records.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors, Steve Smith, County Administrator. On this, we have two different years, financial adjustments, as Mr. Hay mentioned earlier, related to workday implementation. We typically would just have the prior fiscal year, but we have two here. And of the adjustments you'll see on the attachment, probably 85-plus percent are related to behavioral health, Mental Health Services Act funding, transfers in, intergovernmental transfers from one behavioral health fund to the other, essentially. And we also have, let's see, a few adjustments for miscellaneous increases in software, utilities, debt service, fingerprint fees, et cetera, offset with either increased revenue or other reduced appropriations. So with these, these all fully offset the only budget that has any general fund impact. The recommended change is in the 24-25, we have $135,802 that is recommended to be paid for with general fund contingency for the fire administration budget when we had a change over there. So happy to answer any questions and go into detail on any of the recommended changes.
Okay, any members of public comment? No comment? Then I'll bring it back to the board for questions regarding.
To the chair.
Yes.
I'm, help, help me figure this out. So we've got an adjustment being made to a 23-24 budget as of last year?
Yeah, so as mentioned, with the workday implementation and delays, this is just kind of a paper adjustment. And the reason it is is because there's a law, and as, as mentioned in the staff report, Government Code, Section 29121, that says, "Except as otherwise provided by law, obligations incurred or paid in excess of the amounts authorized in the budget unit appropriations are not a liability of the county, but a personal liability of the official authorizing the obligation." And sometimes there are year-end expenses that the department heads really don't have control over, where if one of the inter-funds, say, you know, that you're paying for fleet services or IT services, if it goes over budget, we make other adjustments, like by reducing the budget in another budget unit where we've had savings and increase that so that there's no liability on the department head. If there was some, if there was some expenditure that wasn't appropriate, then of course, we would bring that to your attention, and that person would be held accountable for that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions by the board?
I'd like to make a motion to move.
Okay, we have a first by Supervisor Boone. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Supervisor Stevens with a second. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer? Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, eyes have it, the motion carries. Thanks, Steve, appreciate it. And we'll move on now to, there's no correspondence. We'll move to, did you have any other, a report to give, Steve?
Just two quick things. One, I said I would comment each time until Trees and Traditions. I know Molly already mentioned it, but Friday, December 5th, 6:00 PM, Trees and Traditions, about 75% of the tickets have already been sold. And I, I bought my last ticket online, so you can buy it online, and they'll have it. It will call for you, so you feel fancy walking up and claiming your tickets. Also, on Monday, December 1st, there's a public safety meeting put on by Sheriff Barnes and Chief Epperson at Live Oak High School from 6:00 to 7:30. Supervisor Boone and, and I will be there as well. And it's more just of a discussion of the public safety-related issues related to the contracts that the city of Live Oak was giving notice to the county on, for cancellation, which their point was to, I believe, to renegotiate those due to their severe budget problems. So just letting the folks know again, December 1st, on Monday, 6:00 to 7:30 at Live Oak High School. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Move on to district reports, and we'll start with Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
All right, I want to read this out here real fast before I start with everything this has to do with them. So I'm here today to personally voice my strong support for Assemblyman James Gallagher's resolution that would allow rural counties of California to form a new 51st state. For years, the priorities of rural California have been overshadowed by the political power and populations of the coastal regions. Our communities, our farms, our small towns, our industries have been forced into a one-size-fits-all system that rarely fits us all. We are expected to live under policies that don't reflect our needs, don't reflect our challenges, and don't reflect our way of life. The recent passage of 50, Proposition 50, proves exactly that. Rural counties voted overwhelmingly against it. We made our positions clear, but it still passed because the coastal populations overruled us. That, what, that vote wasn't just about proposition. It was about reminder that our voice is shrinking and our influence is being drowned out. Assemblyman Gallagher's resolution gives us something we've been missing for a long time, a real opportunity for our own direction. This isn't about division. It isn't about anger. It's about fairness. It's about representation. It's about creating a government that actually understands the people it serves. Rural California has carried enormous responsibility. We feed the state, we power the state, we support the industries that keep California running, yet we continue to be governed by policies designed for entirely different communities hundreds of miles away. Creating a new, creating a new state would give rural county, would give a rural county state the ability to govern according to their own values, our own priorities, our own future. It would allow both regions, coastal and inland, to move forward in ways that make sense for, for both. Shasta County has already voted to support this resolution, and today I'm asking that this board send a letter in support as well. And we make every effort in reaching out to other, the other 36 counties and asking for, actually the other 35 counties, and asking them to support it as well. If we stand together, if we speak as one voice, we can show that this movement isn't fringe. It's real and it's sincere, and it's rooted in a long history of being unheard. This is our chance to restore balance, our chance to be represented, and our chance to shape a, shape a future that actually includes us. You know, we speak to supervisors all over the state when we go to conferences, and a lot of them see it, they see that, wow, we're going to lose our voice and what's happening. When you have counties like Sutter County, Modock County, getting intertwined with Bay Area counties, inland counties, we have different wants, we have different needs. Yet, where are the voices of Sacramento going to vote for it? They're going to go after the, the populations in the inner counties and side with them. So like I said, I'm going to ask for that we consider a letter in support of that. All right, let's talk about some great stuff. So we got football going on right now. Sutter High School plays at, we play at Hillmark this Friday for the semifinals for a chance to play Casa Robles. It's a big deal. Sutter High School lost in the state playoffs to Colusa this past week, took it to five sets. Faith Christian is still in the state playoffs, so that's our only Sutter County school. East Nick lost in the state playoffs last week. They won their section championship. So I'm going to ask for a plaque for the East Nicholas High School section championship team, the Sutter High School league champion, a plaque for Sutter High School for their league championship, and for Faith Christian High School for their league championship. And looking, I'm going to ask for a plaque to be done for Sukie Rahul and Jesse Hundel for their community support and contributions towards agriculture in Sutter County and the community in general. These fellows have done a lot. Going to ask for, the Sutter High School trap team just won the state championship last week. So looking to support a parade for them. And our junior Huskies, 8U and 10U programs, who went undefeated this year, first time in the history of Sutter, two teams went undefeated, won their Super Bowls, include them. And then looking to start the process on a paperwork for a in-memory sign of Mark Lemonager off Mulot Road in Sutter, for his contributions towards the community, longtime board member for Britton School, dedicated to the kids. And then last, what I have here is a replica of a proposed monument at the Sutter Cemetery. So Sutter Cemetery has expanded. And not too long ago, we had a YouTube pilot who passed away in a, on a training in the Butte. Butte, so it was Lieutenant Ira S. Addy. And we'll be looking for $1,000 from this board from, to support that monument that is getting, there, like I said, this was a 3D model right here, and Sutter Cemetery is donating the flagpole, and it's gonna be in the new cemetery lot. And Caesar Mendoza is donating the power and the lights to shine on the monument. So we had recently talked about a monument off Butte House where the actual accident took place, but the crash took place, but that would, there's not enough area there. So the cemetery has agreed to set aside an area for that. And that'll be it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Zigmeier, and Supervisor Stevens.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to request a plaque recognizing John Terrish upon his retirement from Reclamation District 1001. John served 22 years on the Board of Trustees there. And then, second, I would like to close in the honor of Ron Phelps. I just learned that he was a, not only was he a Pleasant Grove Fire Department, he was 90 years old, he was a volunteer at the department, but he was also crew chief for Air Force One. So we lost a patriot last week.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, Supervisor Stevens. Supervisor Boone?
Yeah, well, Steve kind of took a little wind out of the sail, but we are having a December 1st discussion at Live Oak High School regarding the City of Live Oak's renegotiation for their services, fire and law, and law enforcement. And also, for those of you that are runners, the Live Oak wrestling team is having a 5K turkey trot at 7:00 AM at Live Oak High School. So those of you who want to get your run on before you get the big meal in.
Through the chair, what day is that?
Oh, there's our runner right there.
Thanksgiving, yeah.
Oh, Thanksgiving day?
Yeah, Thanksgiving morning, 7:00 AM.
At the high school, sorry.
At the high school, yeah. I'll have a number for you with my name on it, so everybody will know who it is.
I was thinking, Sutter County colors, you know, and run. You think you can win?
Okay.
You'll be, Boone's running with you, Supervisor.
Through the chair, I have won one. I think I was the only one in the race. No, there was like, there was like, there was like eight others in the race. It was this year I won, and actually, there was 11, truth be told. And, but, it was the, the 5K for the color run for 4H in Brown's Valley. I was excited. I actually have the medal to prove it.
Chair, if, if I was running with him?
Yeah.
I would be right behind him in a wagon, him pulling me.
Through the chair, Dan used to beat me all the time.
I can't do it anymore. Those guy, he way surpassed me. Oh, gosh. You should get out there and run as well.
There you go. 7:00 AM at Live Oak High School.
Supervisor Baines, are you running, too? Or, no, okay.
So I'd like to have CEO Smith and counsel, may reach out to the California Canyon Peach Association. Unfortunately, Del Monte has been in this chapter since April, the bankruptcy. And just the outcome is gonna be devastating to this community. And I just want to see if, if y'all could reach out to the California Canyon Peach Association, see what type of letter of support, some type of, something that, that the county could provide to the association.
Okay. Anything further? No races for you, then.
Through the chair, Supervisor Baines, question to you, you know, because you're really, you're entangled with all that.
Yeah.
What can we do to, to bring a lot of that over here in Sutter County when it comes to helping out economic-wise, and, and impact fees, you know, having to build structures and so forth, to make it, to lure a company like that over here, or this company?
So I mean, this bankruptcy is, that's gonna be sold. I mean, the properties are gonna be sold. There's, just in the peach industry, there's 80,000 tons that is gonna basically not have a home this year, or sorry, this coming year. So that's just 300 families, 300 family farms, just in the peach industry itself. That doesn't include their pearpacking, their tomato processing, and all the vegetables and that. So I mean, this is the, it's very, it's unfortunate that, the, I mean, we have no idea what's gonna happen. I mean, the trickle effect of the, all the other vendors, the other, you know, the employees in just every aspect of this industry. I mean, it's, it, you really don't know what to expect so far.
Through the chair. Do you have any, Carm, do we have any idea how many Sutter County growers are involved?
At least half of, if not more, probably greater than that. 150 families, I said, maybe 200 families.
Serious situation.
Yeah, very serious.
And that might also affect property values, which is gonna come down the pipeline for us, towards our budget when property taxes come out, if, if those values do drop. So it affects all of us.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor. Some final comments. We have a request, I'd request a plaque for the Friends of Sutter County Library's 45th anniversary. They're celebrating the 45th anniversary in February of 2026. So I'd like to request a plaque for that celebration. Also, this Wednesday, November 19th, at 6:30 PM, all the Board of Supervisors are invited to attend the Tower Plaza ribbon cutting and tree lighting on Pluma Street. And again, that's at 6:30 PM, and everybody is invited to attend as well. It's downtown Yuba City, right in the heart of, where the water tower is, yeah, right in the heart of Sutter County. So I'd love to have all of you attend that. Have I mentioned Celestino's? That's a great, great restaurant. Wonderful pizza there, so I keep bringing that up. Just for clarification, too, I do want to state that the request that you had, Supervisor Zigmeier, one for the $1,000 for the sculptor, will have to come back in the form.
Yes, that was, 5,000, that was 5,000 for the monument.
Okay, it needs to come back.
And we'll have to come back, yes.
Yeah, in the form of a letter. So the request would just change, I mean, not a letter, the request would just change to a staff report.
Exactly.
Okay. And the same for, and the same for the letter of support for the second state or the separation state from.
Yes.
That's come back.
Assembly Gallagher's.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Through the chair, sorry, I forgot this one. I'm gonna bring it up again. Years ago, we talked about the bronze plaque for the construction final, for the remodel of the library. If we could vote on finally getting that going, I want to put that in the, in the vote. No, in this vote. This is as plaques, yes.
Go ahead, Bill, did you have a comment? Sorry.
That, that hasn't been agendized.
Oh, let's put that then on next vote then, please. Thank you.
Okay, and then we'll call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. We have a closed session, so supervisors, please remain. Everybody else, thank you for joining us today. Have a great.
Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9, subsection D, subsection 2.